Call the meeting to order. So it's the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Malinsky.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Mayor McFetrich.
Here.
Um, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from November fourth, twenty nineteen.
So move.
And second.
Second.
Any corrections?
Yes. Uh, Bob Ben, hurt, they use the E on that Ben.
Okay.
Any other corrections? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. A motion to approve the minutes from November twenty fifth, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any corrections? No corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on December fifth, twenty nineteen. Make a motion and a second.
Second.
Any corrections?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein.
Yes, Epstein.
Motion carries. Thank you. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. So I'm happy that we have our youth liaison back today. Do you have anything you'd like to discuss or tell us about?
I think we should try and find something, like give something to teenagers to do. Maybe something like a skate park or something down near the park.
Okay. What else do you think they might enjoy?
I don't know. I mean, it's hard.
I know we did discuss the basketball.
Yeah.
Um, hope which will be going back up in the spring.
I just, I talked to Nick for a little, my son Nick for a little bit about the skate park.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just, and he, um, was telling me that there's the Tony Hawk Foundation and they match. It there's, you know, they would match with a grant. Um, he says that the skate park in Plattsburgh is never used because it's just not functional. He said it, it's just not user friendly and that's why.
That's the only one at a Penfield Park?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, you know, actually he and his friends, it's called Foundation. It's the foundation that's next to the movie theater, Humble and Twelfth. That old foundation has actually been, with the permission of the owner of the property, has, the guys have put in about five thousand dollars in concrete and, you know, rails and, and that's where they skate. They said it's far more fun there, but I think that, and, you know, David and I have talked, and Nick and I have talked, that if we had a skate park in this area, that it would bring in people from all over, which would help with local businesses as well. They would eat here, they would do pizza, you know. But that would keep the kids busy and it's, you know, it's an individual, so it can be a group together sport, but also an individual sport, which is, would keep the kids off the street, it's just something.
It's a huge liability insurance wise. We looked at it years ago for grants and the insurance on it was very high. I mean, we could always re-approach it. Because of accidents and injuries from skateboarding, which are very high, unfortunately. So at that point, we had, we had stopped because I knew that Tony Hawk does the, the match, they do a great job with that. And then the other component was having fixed items within, um, the flood zone area. Everything has to be able to flow over it, but with your, your chutes and your rails and everything, that would not be an issue. So, um, you can always look at it again.
I think it's worth looking at.
Now, do you remember what the cost we were looking at?
No recollection, I just remember it was very, very high.
Yeah, I didn't really talk about that cost.
So we can ask.
I think, I think we should.
We have a different insurance company too.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
I think we should research it.
Definitely.
I agree. It's definitely something that could, could get them something to, to do and enjoy and, close sport.
Yeah, it's got a really good following. Yeah, I think that's.
It'll take them out in the middle of Church Street Health, that would be nice.
Well, it's true, I mean, the more we can give them to do, the better off we're gonna be, but as long as we can afford to do it.
Well, let's research it.
Yep.
All right. And I did have somebody ask me, since I had made mention, so that you were doing the kayak launch. And, um, I mentioned it, a Cub Scout meeting, actually, and a parent made a comment that it would be nice if there would be a way that people could borrow kayaks and I don't know if that's even a possibility because your, the visit, the office closes at what, three thirty? And it's only open during the week and you can't just leave them there, I mean, somebody's gonna steal them. You know?
Yep.
So I don't, it's, I just wanna relay what someone had said to you, because I don't have a kayak.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think there are people that would be interested in kayaking, but.
We have a rack for you to get a kayak and lock it on there, but, um, again, that would be a liability thing, that would be something we'd have to look into. Boating and loaning out boats is really.
Never think about liability.
I know, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Leave it to Amy.
Well, no, you have to, you're right.
Yeah, but there are, there are private businesses that also run tho- those programs. And I know some of the municipalities allow the businesses to set up for, you know, the two months of the summer and they rent them out and they cover their own liability. So that's another thing that we could look at.
I think so.
Because several of them do do that. Other places.
It would be a rental.
But it'd be a rental. But it still could make it.
More affordable for a family maybe to go a couple of times this summer and pay this small rental fee to actually purchase a kayak that you have to somehow get from their house to the river.
The other thing too is if you, if we find that there's, you know, say four families interested in a kayak, they're really very inexpensive if you buy them like at the Sam's Club or anything like that. You can get a decent one for a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five bucks and the four families share it and it's locked up there for use. To share, it's a thought.
Yeah. You need a combination lock and then they could come use it.
Yeah, we do have a rack where it can be locked up, right, right next to the boat launch. But I think it's worth looking into a company that might be interested in running a little business down there in the summer, maybe even just on the weekends.
I like that.
Was it the kayak shack in Plattsburgh?
They're the ones that used to do it at Bags Landing and I think that business was sold to someone else, but.
Yeah, it's, it's changed ownership, so I noticed that the sign has changed, um.
But another thing that's really worth looking into, yeah, I think those are great ideas. I appreciate that. Anything else?
I think we're just gonna find something to keep them busy so they're not doing something they're trying to do.
Yeah, you're right.
That's awesome.
There's a lot of wisdom there. All right, well, thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much for your input, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks for all these.
You too.
Yes.
I'll have a walnut.
Oh, how wonderful.
Nice.
Well, say hi to all of them from us.
Indeed.
Ready?
Thank you.
Thanks. Report from the codes enforcement officer, um.
He didn't hear.
He didn't do the thing and he's not here.
He was on vacation last week, so.
Yeah. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Champlain Board Meeting. Winter has arrived and although we have warmer temperatures today, we know the next few months will bring snow and ice. Our village crews do great work keeping the roads and sidewalks sanded and salted. However, there will always be a risk of sliding or falling. Please drive slowly and watch out for pedestrians. The village is in the holiday spirit. I thank all the employees who have spent time decorating the office. Look around you, how festive it is. The streets and the village park. On Saturday, December fourteenth, from twelve to, from noon to one thirty, children are invited to make holiday crafts at the Champlain Meeting House, followed by a candy cane hunt at the playground. That evening at six thirty P M, the annual tree lighting and community sing-along will take place in Paquette Park. Santa will arrive to hand out gifts to all the children and hot chocolate will be served. Dress warmly and come join the fun. As this year draws to a close, I would like to thank this board, the village employees, and each and every resident for their support and patience as I learn this job as mayor. Thank you very much, everyone. It is through listening and observing that I've come to see the heart and soul of this community. I value your input to make our village a good place to live. In the words of John F. Kennedy, leadership and learning are indispensable to each other. I look forward to a new year of learning from all of you. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and happy new year. Thank you. A report from the trustees. Kim, you wanna start?
Okay, um. So everyone has received a copy of some quotes for the, um, docking for the kayak launch. The kayak launch has been received and is being stored somewhere, um.
It's here in the process.
Awa- awaiting, awaiting its, uh, use in the spring. And thank you for storing that. So with the quotes, and I can't thank Tom enough because he understands the technicalities of docking and things like that, that I really truly do not understand. But, so that, right now, um, AccuDock out of Pompe- Pompano Beach, Florida, is fifteen hundred and fifty-one dollars more expensive, so I, I really wanna just take them right out of the running. So that leaves us with Tedford's of Saranac and Easy Dock of Virgin's. Between the two of them, there is a difference of five hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-four cents, so it's, it's nominal, or minimal, I should say, um, for basically the same amount of equipment. The floating dock on Easy Dock is two sections of five by ten. So, um, that's what we're looking at, the aluminum gangway. Or no, not the gangway, because, um, Modern Mechanical is going to be doing the gangway for us in the spring. We've spoken with.
Through, through the winter, he's, he's working on planes now and, yeah.
He's gonna work on it. And he will be doing that, uh, most likely as a donation to the village. Him and his wife.
We're gonna, we're gonna have some expense towards materials.
Towards the materials, but the, the, I believe the labor portion of it will all be.
The labor will, will all be free. And as you can see, if you'll maybe interrupting, if you look at, oh, he took the, the, he took the prices out. The gangways were several thousand dollars, let's just put it that way.
Well, on Easy Dock, the gangway, uh, was thirty-nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask about that.
Yeah, so that, if you look to the column, the extended price, it all says zero.
They asked him a little bit.
Because we asked them to take that out.
Okay.
Leave it in there so we could see what the pricing was, but take it out on the quote.
Okay.
Both of these companies, um, you know, both being fairly local, we can pick up the materials. We don't have to pay for delivery and of course, we will do all of the installation ourselves. So what we're looking for right now. Pardon me?
With the help of a crew.
With the help of the crew.
I didn't want them to think it was you and me.
I wasn't gonna offer to help.
I, I have helped a little bit with cement, I'm not, you know, real, really qualified in that area, but I could do it if I had to. So right now, the warranty information, I believe, is over at that end. It looks like Tedford's in Saranac might have a better warranty.
Yeah. I agree.
Yep.
Um, and they are local.
Lower price.
More local. And five hundred and thirty-five dollars, uh, cheaper. So we wanna make a decision on this tonight. As to where we're going to order from and that way it can be.
Yeah, one of the reasons are, if we went with the Easy Dock, they're offering a discount until fifteenth December, so that's one of the reasons for. Either way, they gotta get orders.
And.
Fifteen percent more off the fifty-six oh four?
No, the discount's already represented in there, five hundred and thirty-nine, thirty-seven.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
See, see, because with them, if you notice, there's three hundred dollars in freight because of where they have to get it from.
Right.
That's not freight for, of, of them shipping it to us, it's for them to receive it.
Yeah, this, the, yeah, this, this comes out of New Hampshire, actually.
Yeah. I mean, we could take a trip to New Hampshire, but we really don't have the time right now.
Somebody learned about that. Liquor store.
Well.
We are in need of wine. I just don't, I simply do not have the time right now, but anyway. So our recommendation right now, based on what we've seen and, and, um.
Yeah, the, the two products are very comparable, you've got all the specs there. The decking that you get from this company here, F W M, is a little nicer because it's, they're both aluminum decking.
It's like an open grate.
It's kind of, yes, I think there's a picture in there somewhere.
Yes, right, yeah.
And it's, it's an open flow, so the water, the dirt, and even the sunlight goes through it, so it's good, it's hot. The decking from Tedford's is more like a planking, you know? So there is grooves between each, I'm gonna call it a plank just for lack of terms, that do allow some flow of water, et cetera.
Okay. So it's not a solid surface? Stuff can go through?
It's kind of just like, it's just like your deck on your, on your house, basically, but it's made of aluminum
In the grooves.
Okay.
And it's got a non-skid surface painted on it.
Okay.
This one is, is not painted on, it's a non-skid perforated surface. That's what I put it.
So.
And it's, it's in both of those, those spec packets. So when you, that's the only difference I see between the two, the quality of the two frameworks and et cetera are very equivalent. The way the attachments attach to the side of the, the, uh, docks are very much the same, it's just the decking. And it's like, I sat there and like, oh, I wanna spend five hundred more for that nicer decking, you know, that's all, that's really the only difference.
So what do you wanna add, Kim?
So what I wanna say is, Mary, I know you're a kayaker. And you've probably kayaked in different areas. I know nothing about kayaking, nor do I know anything, other than I know our deck at camp gets very slick after it's been stained. Would you have any feedback on, on the kinds of?
Like walking on a wet dock or something like that, that, you know, for slippery surfaces?
Yeah.
I mean, they're both anti-skid.
They're more expensive.
Look, it sounds like that decking better.
A painted surface, uh-uh. Even though they have the longer warranty, you know, they both warranty up to ten years and then, uh, Tedford's then diminishes, you know, the value of, for the next five years.
But I, I think it was specified in there what the paint was warranted for too.
Yeah, but that was limited, wasn't it? The paint was only for two years, if I'm correct.
Then the other difference between the two, because.
All right, you have time to analyze it.
Yeah.
God, let's see, this one, because they sold five by ten sections, quoted me on two of those sections, so you end up with a ten by ten deck, okay? This one, they custom build the size, so we made an eight by ten. So that's the other difference between the two. So I don't think that two feet is gonna, like, take up too much space in the river on us, right? Ten by ten compared to eight by ten.
I don't know. I don't know.
It's going along the edge?
Yeah. Yes. When the river is low and you have to put it out further.
Well, it's going out, it's going out twenty feet and we're not intending on moving it out at low water, it's just gonna be further out at high water. You know what I mean? Because that gangway's gonna be twenty feet long.
Yeah, right. This, this paint, is it like textured, like sandy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Probably has a description.
What's the warranty on the paint, does it say specifically?
Would that be considered the carpet and cedar duck decking?
No.
No.
Nope, it's a non-skid surface for aluminum decking.
Because once that comes off, you won't have a non-skid.
This is dock system.
And it's gonna be out in the full sun all the time.
Yeah, it's a one. Tedford's is the paint wall.
I know, that's why I like this decking better. You'd have to go on the website, look at the two differences and you go, ooh, I like, looks at that one better. You know what I mean? And they're close in price.
Okay, defective materials ownership, the structural component of the dock frame and deck are covered for ten years from the date of purchase, excluding paint finish.
Does that have a separate warranty though?
Carpet and cedar dock decking?
Yeah, I don't think it said it at all, so it excludes, not even part of the ten year.
I think you have to go with the other one.
Which worries me, right.
Color faded, just more than.
For five hundred dollars.
And if the other one has spacing, things are gonna fall through better than, um.
Oh, yeah, I could build up, I probably should bring a laptop with me for you soon sometimes, because the pictures were thousands of dollars.
So this is what, this is what the, the one that our first instinct was to go with. And that is five thousand six hundred four dollars and thirty-four cents, and that's what that decking looks like. And then this one.
Target's deals.
I know, it's not really.
It's like, it looks like it, it would be better traction.
That's my concern.
Well, better traction, like.
That, that would be better traction because of the way, because of the way it's designed.
That's, oh, there it is.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
But it's not just traction, that's, you have to think about the water.
So this is the other thing, it's not a very big picture.
It's not quite the top of it.
Yeah, but since you're, I mean, you kind, Janice, you kind of.
That was a smooth surface, so.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you do, okay, I'm sorry. Didn't realize that. What would, what would your?
Every, every day, but.
What that wears out.
What's that?
Every day.
Wear this one.
So what would your opinion be on that?
Uh, safety's my concern, I want whatever's gonna be least slippery.
So, so here, that paint stuff would wear off and it would be slippery, whereas this.
Yeah.
Over, over time it would, yeah.
Whereas this has nothing that's gonna wear off, it's just gonna, gonna have that.
So.
Oh, I wonder if you can repaint it? If you can get the paint to repaint it if it did start to wear.
Well, you probably could, but that's the.
And how much that kind of paint is.
But that's the thing is, is it five hundred and, is it worth five hundred and thirty-five dollars?
That's the maintenance part, that is kind of better, I'm going.
And then possibly have someone slip on it versus the one that's graded.
How many to, three weeks?
Yeah.
And how long is it gonna be wet all the time?
Right, whereas this one, um, you know, the water and any debris is gonna go right through.
He also. The, the sale, the salesman from Easy Dock also, you know, actually he's a salesman, but he pointed out that it was actually, stays cooler as well because of the holes in it.
Correct.
It's not a solid surface, you know, where a solid, we'll get, we'll get.
Hot.
So that was when that, barefoot.
Still gonna be hot.
Yeah.
Still gonna be hot.
But you probably.
Well, I, I kayak with my shoes.
Shoes, yeah.
Right, I was gonna say, most people are not gonna kayak without it, without shoes on.
So. With that said, then the only thing to talk about is the differences in size, eight by ten versus ten by ten, if that's an issue. And I don't think it is, I think ten by ten gives you a little more space to work with.
Yeah, it's fine.
I would hope that someday we can build off from this and utilize both deckings together.
Yeah.
You know, that would be like.
It's a good plan.
Yeah, I, so if you start out with a ten by ten, you're gonna have more space to work with.
So if we go with the Easy Dock, the difference that would need to come from community beautification would be fifteen hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-four cents. And that would use up all of our grant money. There's a balance of four thousand thirty dollars of the grant.
Right. And then.
And then it would still be fifteen seventy-four and then whatever we would owe John Trombley of Modern Mechanical.
Which. Which, I'm only gonna make a guess at this point, is gonna be a thousand or so. I'm only making a guess, it might be less than a thousand, I don't know.
We have more money in the community beautification anyway.
But him and his wife are also avid kayakers, so they, he, he understands what is needed as well.
If he could. So what he's doing is he's building the plans for it right now. Then he's gonna look at what he has available for materials and if the materials can be purchased, he's hoping that we could help purchase some materials.
And again, we are spreading the wealth with a local vendor.
So I'm thinking if he, you know, if he's got some rails and stuff.
And, and will be good advertisement for him because I would like.
Well, that's just the labor, but, no, he's asked, I mean, he's.
He's always been very generous.
He's awesome. I wanna point out, in case you turn to the second page, Easy Dock also gave me a, a quote on a plastic dock.
Oh, that second one's a plastic one?
Yeah.
Okay, I was wondering why there was a difference.
Which, which, Easy Dock highly recommends. The problem is, the company that we bought the kayak launch for says, do not bolt it to a plastic dock. They sell plastic docks and they wouldn't sell us one. These guys say, I don't understand why not, but I'm saying if the company that sold the launch says, don't do it, we don't do it.
Yeah. I mean.
Okay, I was wondering the idea was different.
I've built their.
That's, that's why I was thinking.
But you know, there's not a heck of a lot of difference between prices, though.
Yeah.
No, there's only like three hundred dollars difference, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I don't know, Janet, if you wanna bring it up on your new business to vote on this, but.
If you wanna vote on it.
We could, we, we could vote on it right now if, if you want.
Okay. So I will make a recommendation that we go with Easy Dock of Vermont for the floating, um, aluminum frame with the, uh, through-flow decking grate at a cost of five thousand six hundred four dollars and thirty-four cents.
Is that a motion, Kim?
Yes, yes.
What did you just say?
I make a motion that we go with Easy Docks of Vermont for the floating aluminum frame with through-flow decking grate at a cost of five thousand six hundred four dollars and thirty-four cents.
But I thought it's five, oh, I turned the page.
Yeah, go to the first page.
That's the plastic one.
Right, right.
That's like, what did you say, I think you just talked the price.
Is there a second, is there a second on that?
Second.
All right. So are any other discussion or questions? I would just like to say to both of you, thanks for all the research and your perseverance.
This is gonna be great.
Yeah.
It'll be beautiful once it's done.
I hear something you're building on, but.
Absolutely.
And the, the one thing, I know we're, we're like in a discussion phase now, but once, once it's done and installed, I know, you purchased the A A R P challenge sign, but I'd also like to have something down there, um, um, from Modern Mechanical as well.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, we, we will do that.
Yeah, definitely.
And then another point, when we refer to the extra money we'll be spending in the spring, we're gonna have to also have the proof cement, a foundation to attach this to. Yeah, so it'll be a little added cost.
Yeah, all right. It's a big asset in the park.
I really think that it'll be, um, I think it'll be well received.
Oh, absolutely. There's nothing like that around.
And who knows, maybe we could get a small business to come in and you see places all over Vermont that, you know, a Mad River and, you know, you just see them all over the place when we go camping.
Yeah.
And, um.
And being the only handicap accessible launch will be huge.
Yeah.
Huge.
So, um.
N C C I will promote it on their website.
Oh, wonderful.
It will be handicap accessible, but it's not, um, A D A.
Compliant?
Compliant, totally. It's gonna have handrails, it'll be four feet wide, the gangway. But to be A D A compliant, which the grant didn't require, that's why I didn't go there, you'd have to add rails to the dock as well, they call them curvings, around the outside of it, to prevent a wheelchair from going over.
I don't want the cost paid to do that.
Well, I could find out. It, I, it, I think it'd be attachable very easily, you know, it's not, I could ask the question.
We could find out.
It would be very worthwhile.
Yeah, why don't you just find that out, I mean, we'll go ahead and we'll proceed now, but just find out.
What would that, what would that, okay?
Sure.
Do you, do you wanna make, do you want me to do an amended motion with an up to amount?
No, 'cause we have no idea what that is gonna be.
And we have time, and we have time.
Kim, we have time.
Okay.
And I think it's just gonna be a accessory that has to go on here, I don't think it's gonna change getting this built, but I'll call the law and find out.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
We're gonna be at the end, but we're almost too busy.
All right, uh, we have to have roll call?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank both of you.
You're welcome.
Nikki?
I'd love to help. Um, not much, and then this weekend's craft event.
I was gonna ask you when that those are happening.
Yes.
Which is just about ready.
Do you need supplies?
Um, for one project, yes.
What do you need?
This is not in your head.
Well, yeah, call me because I have tons of stuff that I keep telling you about that I just.
Red, red and green construction paper.
Okay, that I don't have. Okay, that I don't have. Julie's with all of that.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
White and, but I could always have them colored too, use white paper. Um, white paper cups. That's pretty much it for that one.
Okay.
Green cotton balls, or not cotton balls, pom poms.
Pom poms.
All assorted sizes.
I have a whole bunch of Christmas pom poms, I just gave Christina yesterday, but I'll ask her for them back.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, need glue?
No.
I have a case of glue.
I have a lot of glue there.
The bag I have in there?
So I have three different projects.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some.
And I'll have coloring sheets and puzzles out, and then you need candy canes, where's candy canes?
We have, we have candy canes.
Oh, we have candy canes, we just have to get them out.
Yeah, we're gonna, gonna start chunking stuff tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that it? That is it?
Yes.
I have two, as I have these great Christmas masks, like there's a tree, there's a whatever, and they can decorate foam stuff that they. I'll see if I can find those, I have a whole box of those.
Yeah.
I always have a bunch of kids who like to just go above me on of what is there for them.
All right, yeah Julie was asking, am I coming this weekend?
Oh.
I'll see if Aunt Kina can come get you. Man is being selfish.
That's okay.
It's okay.
Do that once in a while.
I know.
Tom?
Okay, um, the sign, I picked up the vinyl image of the painting, looks nice, um, it was like eighty dollars.
Nice.
So it's cool, it's almost three hundred dollars saved. Um, Scott was supposed to come pick it up and work on it this weekend, and I got a call from him actually today explaining why he didn't make it and. I wouldn't expect this done until after Christmas from the sounds of the schedule, so.
Okay.
But he, he keeps updating me, he's not like he's forgotten us, he does keep updating me.
He's so responsible.
Yeah, I I just, he ended up having to work it sort of all day Saturday, so Sunday, Christmas shop, that was his thing, so.
Very.
So I'm sure we'll, I'm sure we'll get it soon. People know where we are.
Yeah, they do, they can always find us.
But anyway, I think it's looking nice, I need that vinyl, it's a good saving, and it'll work out well. Uh, the only two things I have is, um, we have, I have a blood drive this coming Monday, it's Columbus, so again, I like to announce that. Increased numbers will do well, very well, but come down and give if you can. So it's Monday the sixteenth, it's been three to seven, and then I wanna announce on Saturday, December twenty first. At the Champlain Catholic Men's Club, we are doing our second annual Christmas at Three Oak. So doors open at three P M, Mr. and Mrs. Claus will arrive at four. Uh, there'll be munchies and gift bags, and there'll be children's activities going on, you know, from three to seven basically. Um, at seven o'clock, the theme gets shifted more to the, to the adult side. And Mary McCaffrey and Dave Miller will be our, our duo. And it's, we couldn't stay very late last year for some reason, but I guess they stayed late and had a great time. So hopefully this year our schedule allows us to hang out.
Well, last year it was Sunday, and I don't know, we had.
We had something going on, but they had a great time, and might even have a little performance from Francis and Lori McColdy as well.
Oh good.
So, should should be fun, so come join us there. And we just had the seniors' Christmas dinner, we did Chongshin Catholic Daughters, and that was very successful.
Saw tons of cars.
Yeah, yeah, it was probably about a hundred and.
Twenty?
No, fifty, I would say, he set up for a hundred and eighty, there wasn't that many empty seats.
It was, it was full, and we did it earlier at the request of a lot of seniors. Because they didn't wanna be driving in the dark and and it it worked out very, very well. It was, it was nice to see so many people out enjoying it.
Yeah, we ate one o'clock, so it was great for them, you know, by, well, three thirty they were gone.
Oh yeah.
Eat, drink, be merry, and they're on their way home.
Like it's dark so early, like four twelve this weekend, it's like, holy cow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Had a dark blue tonight.
So very well received from the community.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Okay, go to work in the dark, come home in the dark. Love this time of year.
Yep.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Amy?
Um, so the decorating contest, the judging will take place December sixteenth, um, that week. Uh, so starting Sunday.
This week.
Yeah.
Ah, so make sure your lights are on, there are three categories this year. Um, we're gonna do the best new addition, uh, to try and pull in our new, uh, members, residents who have moved into the community. Because I'm seeing that they're decorating, which is really kind of exciting, so I thought we'd kind of draw them into our, our community celebration.
Yes.
We'll go with the brightest, um, display as well as the best overall, uh, Christmas display. Are you guys getting prizes as usual, Mary and Anita?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, great, thank you all.
And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, and happy holidays, and take this time to love your loved ones. We never know how much time we all have, and it's important to, to say the words I love you and reach out to that neighbor. And elderly resident that has no one, and make it special for them.
Very well said, Mary.
Uh, report from the clerk treasurer?
Um, everyone, everyone has a November, um, expense and revenue reports, and this is our half year. Which means the budget starts soon.
Oh, ready?
I know.
Can't be.
Oh lord.
Yeah, I'm looking at the numbers, I'm like, yeah, we are at half year, yeah.
I know.
You're gonna half year?
Yes, we are not possibly be.
Crazy.
It's crazy. So there is, um, there's a, there's a transfer?
Um, when we do the warrant.
Okay.
We just did this budget.
Oh my god.
I know, that's what I said.
That's the scary thing about time.
Did we just get signature?
Sort of, we just did this. At beer.
Yeah.
All right, so.
So we have.
Looking good.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Looking great, actually.
So on the warrant, we have two, we have two transfers. Um, one from eight five ninety nine, which is fund balance for five thousand forty five twenty two. To eight fourteen ten point four, clerk's contractual to cover the bill for Twin State for the update of our cameras, upgrades of the cameras. We have a bill to pay.
Computers.
Oh, computers, yeah.
I was, I was gonna say, I didn't think Twin State was the cameras.
My mistake. And then we have, um, our E V chargers, one of them is working, um, one is still down, but we have had people using them. So which is good. Um, we have to pay that bill for the yearly maintenance, five hundred ninety dollars.
Even though it's not working?
Um, we haven't paid that since we've had.
We haven't paid it in two years.
Cuz it hasn't worked.
One is working now.
No, one is working and it is being used, um, some guy was parked there all night.
God.
Wow. He was fully charged.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, he's stuck in his car, anyway, he was from Montreal. But anyway.
And someone else used it too.
Yes.
I think two.
Two other people are used it, yeah.
Does it keep track of the hours?
Yes, it does, I have a report on my computer, I can hop on and show you that somebody's used it.
Yeah, it's a little.
Well, that's good. That's good.
Yeah. Um, so our, actually, it comes out of parks and we were short eighty one dollars, so we need to transfer from A. Our transfer to A seventy one ten point four parks, eighty one dollars, from A eighty five ten point four community beautification. So that's my two transfers.
Okay, so do we.
You can do them together.
We can do it together?
Can I just say I make a motion to approve both those transfers?
Yeah.
We're passing them.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion, questions for Wendy on that part? Does that have to be roll call?
Um, no.
Money?
Not spending any.
No, we're just transferring, no, we don't know.
Just transfer, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. All right.
And now we're going to pay the warrant, which we have additional invoices of three thousand eight hundred and seventy one twenty seven. For a total warrant of a hundred ninety six thousand one thirty eighty nine. We have.
I know, it just seems.
Yeah, we have workers' comp, we have retirement, and our.
I know. Loan payment.
Uh, loan payment to the town.
Yeah, I'm like, I know, it's a biggie though.
But that only comes once a year.
I know.
I know. Why does it always come at Christmas?
Yeah.
Back there.
It's Christmas for somebody else, not us.
And when all the assurances come due, it's just like brutal.
Amy, it's always better, it's always better to give than receive.
Keep that thought.
Only if it's being given the way you want it, isn't it?
All right, is there, is there a motion?
I make a motion to pay the warrant as presented with the additional invoices for a total of one hundred ninety six thousand one hundred thirty dollars and eighty nine cents.
And a second?
Second.
Further discussion or questions on any parts?
I just have a comment. Um, so I know that we were having tons of water breaks and we have to run to the hardware store quick to pick up things. Um, I just wanna make sure that as we continue to run out and buy stuff, cuz there's so many charges over and over. That we are following proper protocol, and it is truly for emergency things. And, you know, because you are paying prime dollar, one, but really it's. We really should be approving those expenditures. Um, I know little tiny things, we don't need to be, uh, micromanaging, but we also don't want it to be a common. Practice to just run and pick up things generally and have those charges repeated over and over again. So, I just want us to be mindful of that.
Yeah, specifically, you're talking about a quick trip over to Ace.
So, quick trips over to Ace, you know, um, there's a lot of charges on our, our, um, Sam's Club credit card. Uh, you know, that comes through here. It just, tho- those are areas that run into muckiness when they're not monitored closely, and I'm not saying that anything is happening. I'm just saying that we need to be very mindful of those expenses.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment, um, I do think the Ace ones are definitely, we need this right now.
Yeah, I know, and what do you do?
Yeah, I mean, that happens daily, almost, well, not daily, but it happens frequently.
And is there, you know, a better way, I mean, are these common things that we're running out of that, you know, we should be getting in a different manner?
That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to look at.
Right, so it's just to look at, right, that's why I'm just saying, maybe, maybe not, it's just an observation.
What, are we still using the program that we were using that company, E J Prescott?
Right, that's what I'm saying, so.
Yes, I couldn't think of the name of that book, are those items like Amy's saying that?
Are they not monitoring that, that's all part of it, that they're supposed to be.
I don't.
E J Prescott, they're kind of, what he's doing when they're using them, he's replacing his stock, most of them, yeah.
Right, and they're mostly for parts, this is, the stuff I'm seeing here is, you know, saw blades, fasteners.
It's a lot more miscellaneous.
Some, some.
Green, red, and clear bulbs once we're decorating.
Not necessarily items that you need, you, you broke this saw blade, but it's not necessarily something we should keep in stock.
Yeah.
I think that's what it is, it's like an immediate, I mean they.
I think the saw blades is when they're out doing water breaks, when they were down here at, um, in front of.
Well, they have.
You know, they're cutting and.
You're not, you're gonna have to replace them. Yeah, that's often what it is, send someone up there.
Well, and I assume quite a bit, but I don't know if others or things are just, you know, added to it, I don't know, I'm just saying. It, just an observation and seeing so many of them over and over, month after month, I thought I should just say something for us to be mindful of it. Um, because that's where, where issues come up.
And they are the same things that he keeps.
Mm-hmm, that's definitely something I'm quite happy to talk to him about.
Yeah, if there's anything you can stock rather than.
Yeah.
But it.
Just look to stock some things that are constantly being needed and maybe get them at a better price than having to run locally and get them.
Well, it saves time too, right, not that we have to run that far, luckily, it's really very close, but, um, you know, it all is just management.
It is little, but it does add up.
That's all.
Any other questions? Overall, I think in terms of the budget, we're looking, we're looking really good.
We look great, there's no issues, just preventative measure.
It's looking good. Yeah. Yeah. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, pay the warrant. Roll call.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye. Uh, report for the su- from the superintendent, um, Mike is pretty sick, so I asked him not to come tonight.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, and he also said I didn't even prepare a report, and I said, that's fine. But I can tell you that, yes, we've had a number of water, water main breaks. He did get the, the line repaired under the, well, actually didn't have to go into the road down here on the curve, he did get that one done. Um, so the, the house does have water. Um, there was a break over by the A R C building, there's also one on Ash Lane. Um, he did get the hydrant flushing done. The village is looking beautiful in terms of the decorations, the guys spent a lot of time on Friday, uh, at Pawcat Park, they did a fantastic job.
It looks lovely.
It looks lovely, yeah. Um, I, boy, they work, boy, they work hard. So they've been really, really busy.
Did you, did you find any time to get those quotes in the truck?
Um, which quotes on the truck?
On the pile truck.
No, he did not, I did ask him, he did not. And they really have been out straight, so.
Mm-hmm, they really have.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Robert is at the school now, he arrived last night, and his first day today. And, um, yeah, so I just told Mike he needed to stay home. If you have any questions, I pretty much interact with them every day, but they, they really, they work really well, they work hard. Uh, correspondence?
Um, correspondence from Clinton County Treasurer with Mortgage Tax Distribution, J C O monthly report from November, and the update from, how do you, how do you see?
Inukshuk.
Inukshuk.
On the playground budgets. So I guess.
Oh, that's it.
It's a good one.
Yeah.
Quiet month.
And I'll, I'll just add on the, uh, the, the, the playground, um, I watched them work on that, and they did dig it out to the, uh, the right depth, and they did put in the sand. And then they ran out of time basically, so I asked him to put up some kind of safety feature around the swing so the kids wouldn't trip. Um, there are a couple of signs posted right now, he said he had some fencing that he would put up, some snow fencing, um, so I'm gonna make sure he does that. But they're going to finish it in the spring. At least we have a good start.
You gonna put that fencing up before Saturday?
Uh, I, I'm gonna call him.
That would be nice, yeah.
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 I thought about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, any word on the ice rink, since cold temperatures have hit and.
It hasn't been brought up yet.
It's probably fifty tomorrow.
Every, I know.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we need consistent cold days for a while.
No consistency anymore.
Yeah, I know that.
It's all random.
Okay, well, that means the ice rink.
Coming into the Christmas break, and I know that the kids really like to have that, the Christmas break.
It would be nice.
Ten weeks off, yeah.
They have two full weeks, yes, I mean, we really need to have things for them to do.
Really, yes, yeah. Well, I'll bring it up, but it really is Mother Nature who will dictate that. They could get the boards up.
They could get it in now.
They get it ready, yeah.
They could get the boards, yeah, everything ready.
They're ready. Yeah, so when it's ready to flood, you can flood it.
Yeah.
In their spare time.
In their spare time. I'd like to see it up, but we'll see. Um, new business? So we have the resolution for the land donation to the Champlain Fire District, I think you all have that paperwork. Just, I gotta get down to it here. You're welcome. Does this have to be read aloud into the minutes?
I would say yes, if we step to that front page.
Okay.
I would say yes.
Okay. So do I need a motion first before I read it?
Not the resolution.
Okay. All right. A resolution approving a land donation agreement for the purpose of facilitating the access and construction of an affordable fire station for the Village of Champlain and the Town of Champlain residents, County of Clinton, State of New York. Whereas the Village of Champlain, County of Clinton, State of New York, the Village, is a duly organized and existing municipality created under provisions of the laws of the State of New York and now operating under the provisions of the State of New York Municipal Code and all the laws amendatory thereof and supplementary thereto with full powers to enact ordinances and adopt resolutions for the benefit of residents of the Village. And whereas the Village of Champlain and the Champlain Fire District desire to enter into a donation agreement, the agreement, for purposes of facilitating the redevelopment of the entrance of the Champlain Fire District Fire Station, a parcel of land owned by the Village, a parcel of land located between the east and west boundary lines affronting upon Elm Street located at one fifty-two slash one sixty-two Elm, Village of Champlain, County of Clinton, State of New York as attachment. And whereas the Village Mayor, the Mayor and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain, the Village Board and with the Mayor, the corporate authorities have determined that it's both advisable and in the best interests of the Village and its residents to enter into the agreement and now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and the Village Board of the Village of Champlain, County of Clinton, State of New York as follows. Motion to approve the agreement made by.
So moved.
Seconded and advised.
Seconded.
And a roll call vote.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Thank you. Under new business, the tree lighting ceremony, I already mentioned it a little bit. So just to clarify that everyone knows, the, um, the tree lighting begins at six thirty. Santa will be arriving. We'll put him in the gazebo with the gifts. There is going to, I'll bring down my canopy with the sound system and Tracy Decost is coming and she's going to lead the, the group in some songs. I put together some little song booklets. And Duncan Donuts will be serving hot chocolate. And we'll have, we'll light the tree. So that's the plan.
You want Girl Scouts?
And the Girl Scouts are coming and they are singing with Tracy, yes.
Should we be like at six or?
Yeah, six fifteen even.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Robbie will be here with his truck.
And Robbie's coming with his truck, yes. Robbie Roberts is coming with that truck. That's so incredible.
It is so incredible.
I know.
He's all over with that thing.
Yeah, he, he sent me a message and wanted to know what time the tree lighting was because he's gotta go to K D at five thirty, but then he'll be here.
Wow, that's great.
Thank you.
That's gonna be tight.
Yeah, well, I think usually it lasts about an hour.
He goes by, he goes by my house sometimes, uh, he's been by a couple of times already.
It's just wonderful.
Playing with Zedkin.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah, that's good.
Loves doing it.
Uh, old business, the L E D light, uh, selection. Did you think any more about it? And the other thing is I did call Nancy Bernstein from, um, Anka from Nicerda, well, she works with Nicerda today. And, um, she said, "Think a lot about what you have and how happy people are with what we have." And I've spent a lot of time out on the streets at night recently. And most of our lights are the yellowish ones that I don't know, yeah, the soft ones. I've never had a complaint about a street light.
Other than being out.
Other than being out, exactly. And that's what I told Nancy.
Right.
Did you find out what the comparison was?
It's very slight, um, in terms of the difference between the three thousand Kelvin and the four thousand Kelvin. And she said, "The funny thing is that even though there's a slight difference of, of it coming down, the brain makes you think that the white ones are better, brighter light." And she said, "In effect, it's not really doing much different." Um, but then she went back to, "What do you have and how do people feel?" Because what you're going to get is if you change it drastically, people are going to notice and they may not like it.
And how does the three K compare to what we have now?
Right now, what we have is comparable to the three.
Even, even in regards to lumens, for example?
Yeah, yes.
In amount of light?
Yes.
Okay.
So I personally am leaning towards the three thousand Kelvin.
Across the board now.
Across the board.
Me too.
Because I've spent a lot of time out there and I'm looking at the lights and they're soft.
They're soft, they're adequate, they're not harsh.
Yes. Yes, and I still feel we have good coverage.
Yep.
Yeah.
I agree.
That's fine.
I make a motion to go with the three thousand if we do need to lotion?
Yeah, yeah.
A lotion.
A lotion.
We need a lotion.
I have lotion on, I have lotion on my desk if we want some.
Is that tiny?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you. I'll get on that tomorrow to fill out that farm.
Did you say farm?
I said farm, but I meant four.
See?
Just give me some lotion.
Thank you, I feel better. I was going to have farm with some lotion on me.
Okay, moving right along.
Move along.
Moving right along. Contamination cleanup, I can tell you that we are moving on with that. Mike and the guys removed the tank and the pump from behind the building.
Oh, are they gonna put it there?
Decided to put it there because it was much better.
Yeah, that's why I suggested to them.
Yes, well, that was a great suggestion.
Perfect.
Yeah, the piping is in, it is insulated. They're waiting for the blower. And then once they get the blower, they'll hook it up and they'll hook everything up and it will be ready. So we're close, very close.
I have a better location if it's another fifteen feet away from the neighbor.
Yeah.
I'm worried about noise.
It should be less no, less noisy.
Well, plus the stack can go higher as well. That's another benefit, so the noise hopefully will be. Exhausted higher and.
Yeah, they were very amiable.
It's gonna be loud. I'm worried about noise.
Right, I know. I'm worried about cost.
Well, I do.
Half the noise.
Cost of noise.
Half the noise.
So that's the.
They're both getting irritated.
Yes, they are.
So that's the contamination cleanup, the village sign you already addressed. Any, nothing else to add on that?
No. Hopefully we'll have more positive, hopefully it's in the next meeting, we'll see.
I'll bet it will be. Uh, snowplow purchase, Mike just did not have time to work on that. The kayak ramp, we already discussed that. And, let's see. Oh. The only other thing I want to let the board know, and we're not taking any action on this because we're not ready yet, but I want you to know that the report that came back from the fire alarm inspection is that we have multiple deficiencies. Out of thirty-three devices, only nine passed. So we have, we have smoke detectors, um, that need replacement. We have some heat detectors that need to be replaced. We've got some other parts. There's a, a wiring that has been cut that's not even attached to anything. That's got to be replaced. So, um, we have one price quote right now for that work, but we're going to get two others. So I, hopefully. Is it kids? Oh, is it singing? Oh, is it caroling? Sorry.
No, I started carrying music as well and I was letting me to.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking it was probably the truck.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was looking for it.
So in, in January, hopefully I'll have two, two other, um, sources of information about how expensive this is going to be. So I'm not going to share the cost with you right now, but we have to. No, but I feel like every time I bring something up, it's about the same amount, so we'll just let it ride for now. But it has to be done. I mean, look at what happened at the Town of Franklin.
What happened at Town of Franklin?
They lost their whole building.
They've lost their whole building. On Saturday.
It was in Tulip paper.
Town of, Town of Plattsburgh is.
Been to the paper, yes.
They trucks up there.
Oh, my God.
Their plows, their loader, everything, their whole garage.
And, and that happened to another community a couple of years ago.
Uh, I'm thinking of Beatty Town maybe, that's probably ten years ago.
No, no, there was another one that lost their building, went up in flames and they lost all kinds of their equipment.
Yeah, I can't, I, I think it was somewhere in Franklin County as well, but I can't.
And through the North Country, uh, all the towns have come through and loaned equipment and offered help.
Oh, yeah. Oh, the help's been incredible.
Yeah, the help's been incredible.
But this is something we, we have to take very seriously, of course, and, uh, we'll move on that, we'll move on that next month. I just want you all to know that that will be an upcoming expense.
Thousand?
Well, painful but needed.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely essential.
Essential.
That's all I have. It'll be a lot.
Motion to adjourn then.
Absolutely, second.
That's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Amy, what time did you say on Saturday? One?
One.
At the, um, meeting house?
Yeah, she'll give you the cankey's there.
Come to the, yeah.
Yeah, come to the meeting house and Nikki and I will be there.
Okay.
We'll hand stuff to you. There may be some older kids that wanna help you.
Wonderful.
There are.
There's some unique places, but very few.